About to open the special meeting called for Norwich Board of Education. July 5th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Craig, would you leave some?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I will ask everybody in the audience, please silence your electronic devices. Silence the devices, please. And before we begin our meeting, we are pleased to announce and welcome to our Board of Education, James Paulson, who has been appointed by the City Council on Monday evening, sworn in this afternoon. And so we welcome you to the Board of Ed. Unfinished business, discussion regarding the 2324 budget. Bob Sipinski.
Good evening. I provided the Board of Education with a handout. For everyone's convenience, I have a PowerPoint presentation, so you can all see it on the big screen. Just to recap, at the June Board of Ed meeting on very short notice, the Board had to make a difficult decision as to the best way to cut approximately $2.2 million from the budget. It was clear for a cut of that magnitude that something of significance needed to be done. There were three options that were presented to the Board to consider, each with significant savings, but each had downfalls to the district. The option to restructure the preschool program, enclose Bishop as an educational center, and consolidate and close two administrative buildings was chosen, because this option resulted in the most potential savings. The purpose of this meeting tonight relative to the budget.
Excuse me for one second.
Back to you.
Excuse me for one second. Can you everybody hear him in the background?
No.
The microphone's not working? No.
Is it possible to get him on the phone?
Would you like me to start over? Is it on now? Okay. So, relative to tonight's meeting, purpose that was asked at the last meeting was, I didn't start it yet, was is that enough? Will that option that goes and meet the needs? Or would you have to consider closing an elementary school or going to half-day kindergarten? At this point in time, the answer is yes. You do not need to do anything further in terms of a drastic program change or reduction. Granted, there are a lot of moving pieces in this, and we're still working with the Department of Education what can be done from a preschool program. But for tonight, you do not need to consider closing an elementary school or going to half-day kindergarten. With that, I'll walk you through the budget presentation and what adjustments we've made. Before I get into the reduction that we made, I just want to remind people of three of the significant risks that existed to the operating budget before the final budget was adopted. We all know that our 2223 operated in the deficit because of a significant rise in special education costs and the shortfall on the reimbursement side to excess cost. That's still a concern for next year. Will special ed costs within the budget? It's likely like this past year, costs will continue to escalate and based on need and continued budget cuts. A state legislative body did add money to special education. They did increase the excess cost funding grant by $25 million, but I'm not sure if that will be enough. One change that we haven't had time to analyze yet is the impact of the, I'll call it the 22-year-old aging rule. Previous to the next year, when a student turned 21 on their birthday, they were out of our system. With the new school year coming up, we have to educate and pay for the costs through the end of the school year. So we're still seeing what that impact will be. As you know, we have a new transportation contract and the structure for billing has changed, and we've built savings into the budget based on that. Previous contract had all of our 90 buses billed for 12 hours per day. We've now gone to a tiered billing structure based on actual use, starting with the four-hour, five-hour, and six-hour block. We're expecting significant savings to that in terms of where the contract might have gone had we not done that. The Board also adopted effective October 1, a change in designated high schools and magnet schools. So transportation expenses cease after October 1st to the magnet schools and out of district than the designated high schools that were undesigned. So we'll just be having NFA and grizzled as our designated schools. And then the one area of the budget that continues to be troublesome in terms of predicting is staffing. Ever since COVID, the need for substitutes has been unpredictable and volatile. So those problems or situations existed before you had to cut $2.2 million, and they still are concerns going forward. So with that said, if there are no questions about those three items, I'll move on to how we went about tackling the $2.2 million budget reduction that we were faced with. Okay, it was clear that we had to do something significant, and the chosen model was changing the delivery model of the preschool's education component, and it was restructured. Bishop Learning Center is a substandard facility for education, as we all know. So the plan was to transform that into administrative space, and two other administrative buildings will cease operations, and they'll be returned to the city. That's 90 Town Street, which had hosted Central Office, and 201 Hickory Street, which hosted the special education administrative services. We also went back and looked at other specific line items in the budget and reduced them. So that overall target of $2.2 million is achievable, but it continues to be a work in progress and does carry risk. And there are still a lot of moving parts at this time. We've considered the elimination of grant expense, is transferring of board expenses to grants that have now dollars freed up in them if it's allowable by the rules of the grant. The final impact of funding on school readiness is unknown. Dr. Stringfall and I had a series of three meetings within the past week and a half with many, many state officials, and that is an ongoing process, and we're still working on that. Going forward, any future staffing changes due to retirements or resignations will be reviewed before filling. Even though it's a budgeted position, they might not be filled. So there were a series of budget reductions from the original board budget that was approved. We started out much higher than 6.98. We got down to a Board of Ed-approved budget at 6.98. Through a series of meetings with the Ad-Hoc Committee, which consists of Board of Ed members, the cabinet-level members of the Board of Education and Board of Education employees, we reduced the budget down to 5.68% by reducing a little over 1.1 million from the budget. These additional 1.5 million here in salaries and benefits are a result of closing Bishop Early Learning Center as an educational facility. We affectionately call the earning early learning facilitators, ELFs. Six of those will no longer be in the budget through transfers and the need to not staff these positions at Bishop. They'll be absorbed within the other school buildings where the preschool program will be moving to. We can eliminate a nurse, a BCBA, two social workers, two administrative assistants, a custodian, 10 paraprofessionals through attrition, and three certified bed staff. So the combination of those factors accounts for the 1.5 million. Other line item adjustments that we made, because of the Board's decision to undesignate three high schools and leave NFA and grizzled as the designated high schools, NFA entered into an MOA with us. They initiated this through conversations that they had with Dr. Stringfall and myself. They increased the discount to Norwich's regular ed students by $100. And as you know, our tuition bill is based on October 1 from the preceding year. So with an enrollment of 1,209 regular ed students, we'll see a reduction in tuitions by $129,000. Student transportation has been adjusted downward by 300,000. The Board of Ed had a, in the capital account, had the purchase of a vehicle, a truck for the maintenance department at $75,000. That was in there. The propane truck is at its end of useful life, and Public Utilities recommended replacing that. It's a propane truck, but we just will do without that truck. I've reduced facility expenses due to the moving of Central Office and Hickory Street. That's a conservative estimate just for a partial year, because we don't know exactly how long it'll take to completely empty the buildings. Central Office hosts the servers for our internet, and our IT department has to work with CEN. And it takes about four months to get those moved, so that'll be the last facility to be completely empty and vacant. We did not take into consideration the, I'll call them, soft costs that happen on a routine basis. You're all familiar with the repairs and necessary work that needs to be done to the septic system at Central Office. We will no longer be snow plowing. We didn't look up the dollar cost of plowing and overtime and things like that. So that number in reality will probably be higher than $57,000. We've adjusted vehicle fuel down by $10,000. And we've eliminated two groundskeeper-maintainer positions that were in the budget unfilled. The reason they were unfilled, we're still waiting for the truck that we had ordered last May to come in so we could transport the lawn equipment from school to school. That's the only reason we didn't fill those positions. We couldn't implement the program. So with new schools coming, with the need to reduce the budget, we pulled those two positions. So those positions come up, those cuts come up to another 700,000. So in total, that's how we're getting to the 2.2 million. And attached are the line items showing the different cuts. You can see a reduction in medical insurance for $84,000. That's specific to four or five of the employees that we know by name who are not coming back, based on the insurance coverage they carried. You've seen a reduction in FICA. That's based off the positions in which our FICA paid or the Medicare portion for certified staff. You see the transportation and the tuition reductions and the other miscellaneous line items here related to facilities and Board of Ed vehicle. So that brings us to the meeting, the bottom line of 3.08%. Obviously, this isn't cast in stone, and we're going to continue to work on the budget, probably between now and September, to work out all of the details. There's a lot of movement between positions from Board of Ed funding and grant funding, but this is how we think we'll get there. So that's, I'm done with the formal presentation to the cuts, and I'll be glad to try and answer any questions that you might have.
What's the risk factor?
I think the biggest risk factor is related to special education costs. Again, this year, they exploded and were $3 million higher than what we had in the budget. We did account for that. Overall, the state saw an increase in special education costs above and beyond the allotment they had for the excess cost grant by 16%. So we were supposed to receive reimbursement versus what we got. We were actually shortfallled by $550,000. Based on the new tiered reimbursement formula that the state has in place, our reimbursement should have been at 91%. We came down to 79%. So if one were to assume there'd be no increase in special education costs, adding in that $25 million would be sufficient for us to be up at the 91%. But that's a big risk factor, assuming that special ed costs are not going to escalate again. It seems to be a different educational era where costs are just continuing to increase. And then we're still waiting. We have another session, I think, scheduled tomorrow. Dr. Stringfall, I want you to comment on that with Board of, State Department of Education relative to the school readiness grant.
Questions?
The list gave of positions eliminated on page two. Is that mainly due to attrition? Or some have been eliminated and people have been given things like?
The one related to the paraprofessionals, they're all related to Bishop's closing on that sheet. Paraprofessionals are by attrition. So with the program in its former state, there might have been a need for 12 paraprofessionals. That's now been reduced down to 10. So the 10 paraprofessionals who are in that program will transfer into other vacancies. The early learning facilitators are actually people who are no longer working here. They identified. The nurse, for example, we, when Bishop was an early learning center, we had a full-time nurse scheduled there for not a huge population. By moving the students to four different elementary schools, that nursing position is no longer needed in Bishop. The students will be absorbed by the nurse on staff. The custodian, for example, by not taking care of, it was a split position between Hickory Street and Central Office, not taking care of those buildings, will no longer need a custodian. So that'll happen by attrition as opposed to laying the person off. So that's the way that sheet works. Those positions are directly related to the restructuring of the Bishop preschool program. Oh, there's, if, the total cost of running the Bishop preschool program in 122 was $4.3 million. This past year, we haven't filed a year-end state report. I've done some preliminary calculation. It's over $4.4 million. There's a lot of ancillary services that are provided by the Board of Education over at the Bishop Learning Center, and those positions, there's probably far more than two social workers. That's just what's been able to be transferred or absorbed within the school systems by transferring the program to the respective individual elementary schools. There was a lot of, a lot of this is economy of scale by spreading it out to the buildings where there are existing resources to perform these functions.
So do we have a count how many seats are actually going to be lost as far as in the preschool program?
I think Dr. Stringfall could address that better than I can, and that's still a work in progress as the state is working on coming up with some solutions to fill the gap for the seats that have been lost, so to speak.
This past year, we had 233 preschool slots, 12 different classroom programs. Three were full day, full year, which meant 7 o'clock in the morning till 5 o'clock in the afternoon, all summer, holiday weeks, very, just a few holiday days off. And then three full school day, so not in the summer, not in holiday weeks. And then one full school day Smart Start grant allocated. That's already been approved for the following year. And then five sections, so five classrooms of AM/PM. And then there were some, the calculation from our form from the state said seven students receiving speech-language therapy that were not involved in a program, but were walking in, if you will. That's how it's characterized. In the projection that you voted on, it would go to six AM/PM slots, but would absorb the 14 Smart Start full-day programs. And because they were being transferred from, what a preschool accreditation would call a substandard space, they can, with restrooms down the hall in many of the cases, they're now being moved to a handicap-accessible space. The principals have been really great about working with Janet Norrie to identify classrooms that either have a child-sized restroom within it or very, very close by, certainly closer by than it was in Bishop. We are estimating, depending upon the class size that the early childhood coordinator and staff come up with, accommodating 209 to 233. So the amount of families wouldn't change, or the amount of students. It would be the type of program. So for some students, they were in full day, full year, or full day school year. And now they would all be in half-day programs, accommodating all of our learners with IEPs and also community children. It's, I believe, a 50/50 split. And they would be at Mahan, Veterans, and Huntington. Now, we've since talked with, our cup runneth over with help from the state, and we couldn't be more grateful. And so we've had conversations with all of our elected officials, the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Russell Tucker, and Commissioner of Early Childhood, Dr. Beth By. And Commissioner By has been talking with our early childhood facilitator, Janet Norrie, about ways that the state may be able to assist. So we're hopeful that we will be able to, in addition to this, offer more full-day programs than we thought a couple of weeks ago when we were at the June meeting.
So in actuality, really no seats are lost. It's just the fact that it's going from full day for some students to half-day as the only option through normal schools.
And there's certainly lots of families who rely on that full-day option so that they're able to, so the parents are able to work. So we know that that's a significant difficulty to our community. But yes, that's the essence of it right now. And still continuing to morph. We have been meeting frequently.
And are there attempts being made to get more seats or more spaces, if any, are available among private providers?
So our school readiness partners in Norwich have been incredibly generous and have reached out to our preschool staff and offered students who were planning to come to the summer program, summer seats and even fall seats. And so we believe, between Jenna and I, we believe that all of the families that needed or wanted summer programs have that in place. And so yes, they've been coming forward and trying to help as well. We also have some private preschool providers who are not a part of the school readiness program, who have waiting lists in town of over 100 or more students even before we made changes. And they're looking for space. So if anyone has any space in the community that they're looking to rent to private preschools, they're willing to take on some of the families, but they need space. It's difficult to find space in our area.
So we went from not having room for the kids that didn't need, have IEPs or whatever, paraphrasing, that we were mandated to educate, to now we are going to be able to educate them.
So when you voted to make sure that you were, I can't remember the exact vote, but it was something to the effect of vote to educate in preschool all students that you required to by state and federal law. That presumes students with an IEP, and also presumes community students, because students have to be in a balanced classroom, a least restrictive environment. They can't be only housed with other students who have special needs. So that assumed that at your vote.
So the numbers you gave, though, at the beginning, you said there were only three children that were like 7:30 to 5:00, say?
I mean, three programs, three classrooms.
What was the other one?
Three classrooms. So there were 12 programs. So three were full day, full year. Those were two at Mahan, one was at Veterans. Recently, in the spring, changed to go to Bishop. They were led by three early learning facilitators. The other classrooms were led by preschool, certified preschool special education teachers and our paraprofessionals. Those were three full school day as opposed to full day. So full day is defined as 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. School day is a school day. It's actually a little less than a elementary school day, but think of it as a school day. Full year includes summer and many April vacation, summer vacation. But full school day, school year, is just that, the school year. And then one full day, school year, school day, school year, that's supported by a Smart Start grant. And then five classrooms that have AM and PM. So going from 12 down to six was the cost savings. And now going to just AM and PM. But hopeful that the community school readiness partners can absorb some of those slots and that the commissioners are working on other innovative ways to help. Can't really speak more to that until that gets fleshed out.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Next up?
I guess I'm up again.
Discussion regarding the food service.
Okay. I think it's a good idea to go back to the beginning and recap the whole food process changeover. It's been four or five months has elapsed. And I think from reading newspaper articles and whatnot, there's some misunderstandings or misinformation out there, so.
A lot of misunderstanding, a lot of misinformation's out there.
So anyway, here we go. Changing over was from a self-op to a food service program was a topic that's been discussed previous to my coming here. But most recently, at the March 13th Board of Ed meeting, formal discussion took place regarding changing the program from a self-op program to a food service management company. Some of the reasons we talked about at the meeting were the potential benefits, such as offering more diverse menus for our students, having more resources that are disposable from a company that does this on a professional basis, day in and day out, access to dietitians, nutritionists, innovative programs to involve our students from an educational standpoint and engagement, and additional resources. As you might recall, this past school year, we operated our kitchens at basically 10 to 12 people short, and our employees did an amazing job of getting through it. Our director was oftentimes working in the kitchen as a production worker. From an operational standpoint, pure business reasons, this reduces the district's risk for workers' compensation, insurance, and claims, total health insurance costs, payroll processing, and there are other administrative economies of scale. To go out to bid, to do an RFP for a food service management company, the state has a very strict process governed by them and most likely the USDA. That process began the week of March 13. Subsequent to beginning the process, a meeting was held with the food service managers and state union representatives on May 1 to discuss the outsourcing program. And two of the food service manager employees. of the food service manager employees did attend that meeting. This is the actual RFP timeline and process. It's approved by the state, it's not something we can make up on our own. So on April fourteenth, the request for proposals was issued, and that was through the city purchasing agent on the Bonfire website. April twenty-eighth, there was a pre-proposal conference at ten AM at Kelly, right here, and attendance was required. Site visitations followed the pre-proposal conference, and we, the four or five schools to visit. May third, prospective bidders had to submit questions, and on our end, we had to post the responses to all the questions by May seventh. The deadline for the vendors to submit their proposals was ten AM on May twenty-second. There was an evaluation committee within the school district, and we had to evaluate and the proposals and make a recommendation between May twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. May twenty-sixth was, and this is state language, award of the contract by the school committee. It's kind of a little misleading in terms of language, because a contract isn't formally awarded. Usually you think of that in the sense like the transportation contract, you award a contract, and you just sign it, and it's a done deal. That's where you identify the recommendation by the evaluation committee, and you have the period of time between May twenty-sixth and June twelfth to negotiate the details with the high bidder. It's really not a secret to the vendors, because if, they know this timeline, it's published on the RFP. So if, for instance, Al was a vendor who submitted, and you don't get a phone call from me or an email on the first Monday following the twenty-sixth, guess what? You know you weren't the high, highest scorer that's being negotiated with. So the other vendors know. So the draft contract was due to the state on June twelfth, and sometime between June twelfth and June thirtieth, when the review, is when the review is done by the state, and it comes back to you and it approved, you might have to make revisions, and you have an executed contract done by June thirtieth. So that's the formal approved timeline that we were under. The RFP was actually submitted to the Department of Education on June ninth after hours, I read that in the newspaper. It was technically three days earlier than the approved time deadline. We just sent it in on Friday evening so they could have it first thing Monday morning when they went to work. It was our expectation that between June twelfth and the thirtieth, any revisions that had to be made would be done, and we'd have an executed contract. Interaction and dialogue with the Department of Education Food Service Division began on June twentieth, so sometime between then, and then that's when they got around to actually reviewing it, and it's been ongoing ever since. On Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, the state had notified us that they didn't like some of the narrative that we had in terms of the scoring, so we underwent an RFP scoring training. On Thursday, June twenty-ninth, the RFP scoring was resubmitted to the state for review. The dialogue has continued, and final revisions were submitted on July third. And as of today, as we sit here, it's still being reviewed by the Department of Education. So that's the process, that's where we stand, and that's the best I can do in bringing you up to speed on a timeline for that. Now I'm going to talk about the food service update and the summer meal program. The summer meal program that NPS planned on doing was to serve twenty-three sites. But as of June sixteenth, which was the Friday before the Monday when the program would start, the Department of Education had not yet formally approved the application. And as I said, it was scheduled to begin on June twentieth at the following locations. I'm not going to read all the locations, they're up there before you. That's not all twenty-three of them. Those are just the sites that were scheduled to begin on Monday, June twentieth. The largest population that was going to be served was NFA students, which was approximately a hundred students, and our own preschool program. I think the next highest site might have been the Otis Library, which had twenty. Most of the small ancillary sites had an expectation of serving ten breakfasts and ten lunches. The REC program was a really big piece of the summer meal program, and that was scheduled to begin July third at Moriarty and at Uncas. Uncas was going to serve, I believe, a hundred and five children, and Moriarty had forty, that was in the age three to six, and Uncas was aged six to twelve, and it was scheduled to end until August eighteenth. The Norwich Public School ESY program was scheduled to start July tenth at Kelly and K Street, and the program was for breakfast only. The REC Summer Jam program was scheduled to start July tenth at St. Mark's Church. That was a breakfast drop-off only for fifteen projected students. So at that time, up until June eleventh, tenth, twelve Norwich Public School food service employees had committed to work the summer meals program, and they were scheduled to work. On Sunday, June eleventh, the food service director informed NPS by way of email that all employees except one withdrew from working the summer meals program, leaving only one employee left to serve the summer meal program, and that's what caused the summer meal crisis to surface on June twelfth, Monday. Was not possible to do the full program with one employee. We had four and a half working days to figure out what to do. The director also informed NPS that her last day of employment would be Friday, June sixteenth. The director was off the entire week and came to work for a few hours on the sixteenth to finish up. So one additional NPS food service worker came forward and was willing to work the summer meals program, but she could only do it for a two-week program as she was scheduled to be on an overseas trip for the balance of the summer. So on Friday, June sixteenth, which was the last working day before the meals program was supposed to start on Monday, we had two employees to do the work for the entire summer program, so decisions had to be made. So we started serving meals with that limited staff of two people at the largest site, NFA, and for our own students at the pre-K program. During this time, we had to have several interactions with the Department of Education, because you can't start serving summer meals until you have an approved application. And on Friday, the sixteenth, we didn't have an approved application. So I had a conference call with CSDE on the sixteenth to review the summer feeding options and inform them that I only had two staff members, and I couldn't possibly feed the twenty-three sites that were listed. The Department of Education gave me verbal authorization to begin serving meals at NFA and the pre-K program for the twentieth, and we were going to work out the details later on. So on Wednesday, the June twenty-eighth, Dr. Stringfeld and I had a conference call for a few hours with the Department of Education, and the bureau chief at CSDE informed us that Groton and New London would be servicing summer sites while they worked on our RFP proposal. We then found out that Groton would serve NFA, Norwich REC at Moriarty and Uncas, and the Summer Jam at St. Mark's. We did then find out at another phone call that we had related to Bishop's restructuring and the summer program, that New London will serve meals at Melrose Apartments, Mohegan Apartments, and Otis Library beginning July fifth, which was today, running through August That's when we found that out, on June thirtieth at two oh five PM. Then at three o'clock on the same day, on the thirtieth, which was last Friday, in a statewide conference call, the Department of Education informed us that Montville might pick up a couple of the sites. So we cannot feed the other thirteen sites until we have an approved contract from the Department of Education. They made that clear to us, so we're waiting for them to approve that. In the same timeframe, in June, we had some other critical food service needs that needed attention. The CEP certification, which was due June thirtieth, had not been done. That certification enables all of Norwich children to eat a hundred percent free meals. I had never done that before. So we contacted Department of Education, and several NPS staff and I met with them. We received training, and we submitted that application on June twenty-eighth to ensure that all Norwich students will eat completely free breakfast and lunch. The Healthy Food Certification that the board took action on in May had not been submitted, so we submitted that application that was due July first. We submitted that on June twenty-sixth. The food service claims for the month of June have not been submitted, so I'm going to start to work with the Department of Education to learn how to do that, so we don't lose that reimbursement. So I think that's an awful lot, but that's where we stand on the food service program and how we got to where we are.
Next that you, the, next that you have to submit for this food service program, you assisted by anybody from the Norwich Public School system?
For the, which, which one?
The, the outsourcing to, to the.
The RFP.
Oh, the RFP?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Bob Castrol from the city assisted, the food service directors, she did a great job in assisting with the application. I worked on it, Maria Perillo worked on it. It's quite a submission of documentation to get it done.
So the food service manager.
The director?
Director.
Yes.
She helped you with the.
From day one.
From day one?
Yes, sir.
So she was fully aware of this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board?
I just had a quick question.
Yep.
Now that London and Groton are providing services, meal services to our students right now, how might that impact our application? And then my second question is, once the state approves our application, how, what's the process for staffing in? Because what you just said is that we don't have.
I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about the summer meal piece of it.
Yeah, I'm thinking about summer.
So what would happen, and I'm hopeful that, I was hopeful I'd get notification today, but I, I didn't receive anything, that once, if and when we receive the formal notification from the state that the submitted contract has been approved, we have to execute it. Documents need to be signed, and addendums, and so on and so forth. So as soon as that happens, then the food service management company would take over. We will have to submit an application based on the sites that we will serve, find out what date we can start serving. They'll have to do site visits and follow all the USDA requirements and regulations. But they have resources and employees that can do this, so it will be irrelevant that we don't have any food service workers, because it will be under the operation of the food service management company.
Question?
I'm just curious, because it says here, on May seventh, responses from the SFA bidders were due, written, whatever. And then it also says that May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, awarded the contract by the school committee.
That's correct.
Correct? I'm curious as to why on May ninth, jobs were posted on Indeed for Chartwell, a company that we had not yet signed up with, looking for food staff to replace our food service department?
Those, those were not for Norwich Public Schools positions.
It was actually for Norwich Public Schools. I got an email sent, I'm speaking.
Not you? I'm there all day with you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Control yourselves, all right? Please.
We, we, we don't control.
Export it out.
I am a food service worker. I work in food management, and I have a servesave application. I get these notifications. And it was for New London County, and the only school in New London County that is transitioning to a privatized company is Norwich. So please, can we stop with the lies? I want, I want honest answers. Stop being shady.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I, I respectfully disagree.
Even if it was.
No, because we're continuously saying that we have no food service department, we have no one to feed the kids. You keep trying to place blame on them. They wanted to do their jobs, you didn't allow them to. You wanted to privatize, and you let them go. Now we had, we have kids not eating for summer. Okay, we had to depend on, thankfully, Groton in New London and Montville that was willing to step up where we failed. And we still just can't openly admit it. That's what makes me concerned, is there's no accountability. When I make a mistake, I own it. It'd be nice if there was some accountability here, besides just me.
I respectfully disagree with your interpretation. Any ads posted on Indeed by an outside company like Chartwell's were related to other school districts. Chartwell's supplies food services to NFA in the area. They do Lebanon.
It was not for NFA.
They do Lebanon. We hadn't even scored any of their proposals yet. They hadn't even been submitted, that's a total impossibility.
I'm just saying that there's a lot of things that seem mistrust. Keep wanting to blame it on Erin and this food service department. These women care about our kids, they're the ones who showed up at Bully Busters volunteering to feed the kids, when once again, we failed. We failed. Admit it.
If, if you want to see documentation, I can provide it to you.
Show it.
In writing.
I'm sorry?
I can provide you documentation that the workers withdrew their commitment to work from the food service director.
But why did they do that?
I don't know.
After they were treated with disrespect.
Heather.
You have to, you have to own that part. You bullied some of them. They posted things on Facebook, social media, and you, you went there.
Heather.
And you harassed them.
Heather. Heather.
No, I just want open and honest answers.
You're, you're bringing up facts that nobody, there's no factual basis on that.
There is factual basis on it.
Where is the actual basis brought to us?
Okay, what about the food climate surveys? Are we not going to look at the food climate surveys and see how that staff said they were treated? Are we going to continue to ignore the people who elected us? I don't want to, and I will not ignore what their voices. And it doesn't seem like anybody else wants to just get the answers. I want answers. And I want our staff, and our children, and our parents to feel safe and secure sending their kids to school. And right now, as a mother, I don't feel that way. And I'm embarrassed to be saying I am a Board of Ed member of Norwich right now, because we continue to sweep it under the rug, and I'm not going to do it, you're not going to keep me quiet. That's it. I'm done.
I'm not trying to keep you quiet, Heather. I'm trying to temper you down, all right? Take control of this. That's all, that's all I ask. You have very valid points, and you have very valid questions.
And I apologize that I get.
But raising your voice, like I'm doing right now.
Right. I understand.
It's not, it's not going to help anything.
I understand.
This room is filled with everybody that wanted to come tonight, all right? Maybe there's more in the hallway. We understand, it's, it's, there's problems. We're trying to go through them.
I understand that, but when I feel like he is just going, like, I, I feel like we've been lied to by him. And I've asked questions before. When I first got on the board, I did ask for questions. I have Freedom of Information Act, and all knew it was me, and it gave me the runaround. So there have been reasons, I want to believe in you, Bob, I do, I want to believe in every one of us, that we are here for the right reasons. But right now, I'm having a hard time feeling that from you, because I've caught some things that don't make sense. Red flags have went up. I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
Great. What, what needs to be acknowledged is that we screwed up on this one big time. I got to admit, I didn't do my homework, understand the reality of the situation. What is, what is true right now is that we are not able to serve our summer program, and we had all of our, a large number of our employees left. You know, our understanding is that we're going to guarantee these food service workers a job, but the conditions couldn't be guaranteed. They didn't know what their schedules would be, what their hours would be, what their benefits would be, what the terms of their contract would be, and that's a scary thing. And so we basically put these people in a position where they chose to leave, because they felt like that was the thing to do, and I understand that. And so we have to acknowledge that we messed up, we've got to reflect on that and make sure it doesn't happen again. That's the point that she's trying to make here. We can't just, this timeline is good, it's good that we have that information about this, but it doesn't get to the point of, we messed up and can't serve our summer program now. Al?
But it is the timeline. We followed, we did what we had to do. We got all the information in on time. It's still the timeline. There's nothing more we could have done to make, to, to, to be ready on our part.
Ultimately, we're responsible, we got to.
You're sure. We have to anticipate that these things could happen.
We have to predict that. We know we have to go to, in front of the State Board of Education with our proposal, we have to expect that they're going to send it back, we need to be ready. The bottom line is, we didn't do it appropriately, and on June twentieth, there were kids that were hungry who didn't get fed. And if it wasn't for Debbie from Bully Busters, there were multiple children that wouldn't have gotten fed the rest of the week, and that doesn't sit well with me.
I agree basically with both of you, essentially. But my concern was that, especially regarding the privatization, which caused our people to resign, our people to leave. We were discussing this way back in March, and then, like you said, and then we had the follow-up meeting, and two employees were attended. And then, like you said, then we had the follow-up meeting and two employees were attended. So they were aware that we were going towards privatization. And I wish that was when we started hearing more. And, and that bothers me that it was all, you know, when we were getting close.
We were finishing.
And we really needed to have more of a heads up from everybody because like I said, it started back in March. At least that's what I'm hearing because I didn't receive a single thing from anyone. And we're the people that you should reach out to. It's not the newspaper, not Facebook. It's to us. We're here for you guys. And I swear by that. So if I'm incorrect, please let me know. But I wish more people had come forward sooner or, like I said, unless I'm correct. You did to somebody and I don't know about it. I know we were approached about visiting a cafeteria, but that was pretty much after the deal was done. And my other thing was regarding feeding the summer program. I don't know what we could have done. Like Gray says, we own that. And, but the problem is, is because we were hiring a company, I was under the assumption that they were going to be in place already. I didn't know that the state, as a former state employee, I understand how things happen. They don't happen. It goes at a very, in a very slow process. And I know one of our representatives is here, well, actually two of them, right? I'm hoping that they probably have been trying to help us already get this through. But it seems like by summertime, the state shuts down. And that's with everything. And, and that's too bad. And so we, we have to try to, it sounds like things happen being done. We did things on time. But the lateness of everything I know is an issue, but...
I know that I talk to the food service department a lot, okay?
Excuse me, I wasn't quite done, Heather. There was one thing I wanted to say though regarding Chartwell's. I did hear when I spoke with a couple of cafeteria workers that when they went and reapplied the day, and I did mention this to Mr. Aldi at the adult ed graduation, when they went and reapplied with Chartwell's, they were given an assignment in Plainfield when our assumption was that they were going to be able to maintain the positions that they had. They would go right back, I believe they were Kelly people. So they were going to be able to come back to Kelly, but they were told Plainfield.
So what I wanted, I just wanted to end on, I know that I talked to a lot of food service department and they love our children. And they would be willing to come back if they could get a little bit of honesty and respect and owning the situation and not just from the board members, from the people who actually were in charge of getting that stuff situated. We didn't make this contract. We didn't say to get rid of them. I don't want to get rid of them. I think they're great people. I don't think we should have ever privatized. That's my personal opinion. But what I'm saying is, they're willing to come back. People are willing to do what's right when they're treated fairly. And this school constantly talks about equality this and equality that, but we can't even treat our staff with respect. And we hurt their feelings. We hurt, we insulted them. We need to own that. We need to apologize for it because they love our place.
Anything else? Moving on. Public comment?
We have Senator Kathy Austin.
Before we do this, hold on for a minute. The board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the boards on matters within the board's authority. On behalf of the board, I wish to remind those offering comments that we have to be consistent with our bylaws and we ask that the speakers please limit their comments three minutes. And there is a maximum of 30 minutes for each subject matter. All speakers must maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone. We do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the board and not to any individual board member or individual member of the administration. As noted, public comment is your opportunity to convey your views to the board, but it is not, can I repeat, a not-question-and-answer session. The board and the administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with, in dialogue during the public comment period. The board and the administration will determine whether, when, and how to address questions that arise during the public comment period. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. With that being said, I'd like to declare public comment open. Senator Kathy Austin.
Good evening. I don't know if this is on or not. Can everybody hear me? Okay. I'm loud anyways and I'm just loud naturally, so Heather, you'll get used to it. Don't worry. So I'm here to try to spend the three minutes that I have to talk about what the state is doing. First of all, the state doesn't take the summer off ever because I know I was up there on July 3rd and I've been in several conferences with members of this board and staff of this, of this administration. So I have, I am not going to go tit for tat on any of the timelines. I may disagree with some of the timelines and how things happen. But that, that is water under the bridge. And my idea here is to come to you and say, we should be working collectively together to solve issues. And the first issue that I would like to see us resolve is preschool. So I talked with the Office of Early Childhood Commissioner today. This is probably about my 10th conversation revolving around Norwich preschool's situation. So when I talked with the commissioner today, she has indicated that the Board of Education superintendent has said that about $400,000 would lead us to return preschool to a portion that is full day, full year, a portion that is full day, school year, and a portion that is half day. And we are working to try to appropriate that $400,000 already previously appropriated in the budget so we would not have to add additional dollars onto that. And by the way, we are now hearing from every other school readiness organization in Norwich that is looking for additional dollars too. So we want to make sure that we can do that so that we can make sure that we are having as many slots that you had before go full day, full year, full day, school year, and on. That, that is the goal of the Office of Early Childhood Commissioner and the goal of the legislative delegation is to make sure that the resources are there to do that. We consider that every student should have the opportunity to go to full day, school year. We would like to see preschool for a full day, school year for every student that comes into Norwich. That's the goal. And that is why we've been putting more than $1 million every year into the budget and ECS and more money into school readiness. And next year, close to $5 million is already appropriated for the Norwich Board of Education. And we are working on making sure that that is not just Alliance District money. As a matter of fact, you can all take your Alliance District Management Plan and resubmit another plan which would allow you to spread those dollars out to other programs. And I'm hoping that the administration of this Board of Education will do that because that's exactly what we should be looking at is ways to have the 1.4 million that we put in the budget for, in addition to Norwich and the $5 million next year for Norwich to make sure that they have enough dollars for the students. We also put an additional $15 million last year into the budget. We made sure that Norwich was a top tier to receive special education or excess cost, whatever term you would like to use. $15 million more was put into the budget last year and $25 million this year and $25 million next year has been put in the budget already for special education. Now, we put in the numbers that the State Department of Education tells us would fully cover excess costs or as close to that as we can. The goal is to make sure that you're getting at least 91% of your excess costs, which is four and a half times per pupil ratio. And I'm going as fast as I can to get all this information out there. And so relative to your regular budget, we're looking to make sure that we are covering, we want, again, I can't say this enough, we want preschool to be full day, full, full school year at a minimum. And the goal is to get full day, full year because the people in Norwich need preschool that covers their work schedules so that they can get to their job. And that, that is just exactly what we, we need to do. I also want to remind all of you that, that the legislative session next year is a short session, but anytime you want to call us for ways that we can assist in getting additional dollars for Norwich or helping out with this is something that you should consider, all of us as our doors open. And that, that is not something that happened this last year. And I think that that's, it's very important that you let us know the difficulties that are going on. I didn't hear about a possibility of preschool closing until after it was in the papers. And I would tell you that I know most of you and you all have my number. And at a minimum, you can text me and tell me that I, that you have a big problem that's going on, a very big problem. And that is, that you need us to step in because we have the ears of the commissioners, especially when we're going to vote on their budget. And if you let us know, we can do that. So now that's the preschool situation that, that you have. I'd like to talk a little bit about the, both the school meals and the summer meals. I have to say that I am always opposed to privatization. It never leads to a good income, a good outcome. It always leads to people who live in the community losing jobs. And that, that's hard for me to swallow that we would want to have something that we would lose jobs. But relative to the, and, and so I'm hoping that we can come up with a contract that's amenable. I did talk to both the Office of Early Childhood Commissioner and I talked to the State Department of Education. And so when I talked to the State Department of Education, I asked, how long does it take to get a food service contract approved? And they said, if it's in good shape, it's three weeks at a minimum, three weeks. But we take, they come on a first come, first served basis. There's 181 school districts in the state. That means that there is an opportunity for 181 applications. And so you should always make sure that you give yourself some time to get it in. And by getting it in just before the deadline, by getting it on Friday when the deadline was Monday, doesn't give a lot of time for people to respond. And my understanding is that there is some, there were some things that had to be updated or changed or modified. And that modification has been put in and that modification has still not been approved. And there may be further modifications that are required. And so that is something that you should always be prepared. When somebody else is overlooking a contract, there are always modifications that happen. As far as Montville coming in, I was hoping to hear by this meeting whether or not Montville had agreed to help out, but their food service director just came back today. They're hoping to have an answer tomorrow on what sites Montville will take over. And relative to both school meals and summer meals, those are handled by USDA. And USDA is a federal organization that also you have to comply with the, their contract requirements. We want to make sure that we're providing good food to kids all the time. I did go to Bully Busters and talk with the food service workers then. I think many of them would have been willing to have worked with you all summer long. Relative to summer meals, USDA, my understanding of this situation was it came out, the State Department of Education was completely surprised that the school was not serving to all the kids. And only when we had one of our conference calls did this, this come out. So they went to work and were able to ameliorate the loss of, of food service sites being provided by going to Groton and New London. They also called Montville and you already know that story. So by having Groton and New London come on board, that was able to make sure that kids are getting fed. Most important is that kids get fed. We want to make sure that kids get fed. So I'll continue to communicate with both the State Department of Education and the Office of Early Childhood to make sure that you are getting the resources you need. Again, just to recap, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but to recap, my, my goal is to make sure that we have enough resources coming in to at a minimum have full day, school year, but I would like to see full day, full year. And that you have summer meal sites that are being supported, that have, that every child in Norwich is getting food that they need, both breakfast and lunch. We know we live in a distressed municipality and we need to provide resources for you to make sure that children are receiving the need, the needs that they have. We, we can't have children go hungry. It's just, it's against our moral code. It is really, it's just quite frankly, it's exhausting for them to go someplace and expect food. And when we're not there, that is just wrong. It's just flat out wrong. So I think that I've taken up too much of your three minutes' time and I don't think I, I gave my address. 187 Scotland Road, Baltic, Connecticut.
Thank you, Senator Austin.
Thank you. All set?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Eggleston, 215 Rockwell Street, here in Norwich. I work with taxpayer dollars in my day job, Electric Boat. And I think we all understand the obligation. We have taxpayer dollars to use them in transparent ways and efficiently. And transparency is hard sometimes, but thank you for doing this. Regarding the budget, lots of great info. Really appreciate getting all those details. I recognize the risks that you put up there on that first slide. That's all the truth. What I'm missing is I don't, I don't see how all those numbers translate to an impact on the school system. What are the consequences of those numbers? That should have been part of your budgeting process. And I'm not saying you didn't do it because when I heard the conversation going back between you and the board and the questions and the answers I got, I got hints at the strategy that you were trying to implement. I could see there was some thought. I didn't get enough. I didn't get enough. Now, it's not practical to have a rationale for every line item in there, but I needed more assessment of why each one of those choices was the right thing to do. Maybe the big ticket items and that would help me come to grips with what you're doing and why it's the right thing for Norwich. So that's the budget. Regarding food service, similar theme, I think, but very different circumstances. All that information was good, but I go back to two of the bullets on the first slide, the one that talked about all the qualities that we were going to get by going private with the menus and the dieticians and all those good things. And then the second bullet, the reduction in liability, that bullet's the truth. I recognize that as the truth. That's a good thing. But all those qualities they were going for, what were the attributes used to pick Chartwell's compared to the others? Is that public knowledge? I don't know. Are you getting what those bullets say? I don't think we know. Can you explain why Chartwell's was the choice to meet all those qualities? So we can understand why this was a good choice? And, you know, this is all... And, you know, this is all me, as a cold body, coming in here and looking at it for somebody who wants to understand. But those things were missing for me. I still am as confused as ever why we went down this path. So, last thing, I'll ask that, maybe a year from now, why don't we, why don't you folks agree to take stock in this decision and come up with an assessment of how it worked out? What have we achieved? What have we gotten? Now, it could be opening old wounds and starting this conversation all over again, I realize that. But I think it's the right thing to do. We need to understand whether this was a good decision or not. And it would help all of us understand the intent, the rationale, what we're going for. And it's, and if you fall short, you fall short. We all do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Leanne Gothier. If the board doesn't mind, I like to stand.
Absolutely.
Their chairs are just a bit uncomfortable.
It comes out of it, doesn't it?
Just pull it towards you.
Before I read my prepared statement, I'd like to just address some inaccuracies that I've heard.
Please state your name for the recognition.
Oh, yes, sorry. It's Leanne Gothier, eighty Pacemaker Ave, here in Norwich. I would just like to address some of the inaccuracies that I heard earlier. I'd like to just give you guys some information. First, the number of students at Bishop Early Learning Center. For those of you that don't know, I was the nurse at Bishop Early Learning Center until I was recently reassigned as the float nurse. So inaccuracy number one, the nurse at Bishop was not eliminated, I was reassigned. Inaccuracy number two, we had over two hundred students at Bishop, and I heard a comment that there was not many students there and that there was not a need for a full-time nurse. We had many students that had lots of, they were very high-risk medical students, had high-risk medical needs, that did require a full-time nurse. In fact, I was, I can attest to this because I was the nurse there. I was busy constantly when I was there. The other inaccuracy, the last thing that I will, that I can attest to was, we did not have two social workers all year. One of our social workers was on leave of absence for about five months. We did not have any social workers for about, I think, three months. And then we had an interim social worker come in for a one month. And then our original social worker came back during, when she was able to come back the last six weeks of the school year. So no, we did not have two social workers the entire time. And now on to my prepared statement. As you all now know, my name is Leanne Gothier, and I was the nurse of Bishop Early Learning Center until I was reassigned to the district float nurse after its closing. First, I would like to say thank you to the board for hearing my comments. Second, I would like to express my disappointment with the board's hasty decision to close Bishop Early Learning Center. The decision will negatively impact the children and families of Norwich greatly. While we do not have the time, obviously, to discuss all of the reasons why, I realize that some of the members of the board and Dr. Stringfellow may not recognize or fully realize what our community is up against. A friend and previous coworker of mine, who is also a nurse and a Norwich resident, was paying just shy of two thousand dollars per month for her two young daughters to attend daycare in our city. She was essentially working just to pay for her childcare. Now I ask you this, how many of our families can afford two thousand dollars a month for childcare? This is about twice what some families pay for rent, if not more. Our early learning center was integral to our community, and now it's gone. This takes away from our children and families, but also undermines the work of our director, Dr. Jenna Tenor, and our staff who worked tirelessly to receive our NIAC reaccreditation this year. That same group of staff members walked into Bishop on June fourteenth and found out that our school was gone. The devastation felt by our staff and families cannot be overstated. Bishop received constant calls from angry, confused, and crying parents, and we had no way of answering their questions because we were not given any information from an administration. All the while, staff was dealing with our own feelings of grief. I would like to just mention that part of why my statement took a little bit longer was because I had to address some inaccuracies. So I'd just like to read this last part of my statement. Are you planning on working with the OEC? Or other forms of funding? And I would just like to bring up the Board of Ed's mission statement, which is to provide an environment where equity is the norm. What part of this budgetary decision was equitable? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen Salz.
Hello. So it's my first time doing this, so I'm going to do it as best as I can. My name is Jen Salz. My address is two ninety-two Norwich Ave, Taffville, Connecticut. I'm a mother of a preschooler. My situation's a little different. My daughter is guaranteed a spot in preschool. However, it's half-day. She was in full day last year, and she learned so much, not only from the specialists that worked with her, but the students, the integrated classroom, the students that worked with her, that were treating her like she was no different than anybody else. It's great to hear that there are outside private places that are willing to take our kids. However, how many of those private places are able to deal with special needs children? My daughter has Down Syndrome. If you've been into Bishop, you probably know exactly who she is, because she's the only one. I'm sorry, she's the only female. There is one other. But these daycares out in the community don't have the ability to take care of her the way that the school system has. Now, I have been told by multiple people that I should go to each one of the Board of Ed people and talk to them about my situation and how I feel about it. However, I agree with Heather. I don't feel that I can. I don't feel safe doing that. I don't feel that it's okay. There are one or two of you I feel I could talk to. But if I'm not mistaken, your number one job is to keep our children safe. If that's the case, please do it.
Thank you.
We have Darlene. I'm sorry, I can't read the last.
My name is Darlene Key, and I'm a property owner and resident of one oh four River Avenue, Norwich, Connecticut. And I'm a grandmother as well as raised my children here. Oh, I can sit. Okay. I just want to make sure it's like a leave on time. Okay. I spend, I spend more than fifteen to twenty minutes trying to get in the building. Okay. All right, now, this is my grandson, one of the three, who was a direct recipient of the Bishop Early Childhood Readiness Program. And also, during the summer, my neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods truly benefited from the summer food program. And I know you all have capacity because you did a good job during the pandemic, seeing that food was delivered. Kids were fed. The kids were all at the library, and they had meals. They were able to be tutored, they were able to be read, and they were kept up in school. I know you have capacity, and I just want to remind each and everyone here that a child's sense of time is totally different from us as an adult. We're already almost finished with the first week of July. So waiting three weeks or whatever, how long are we going to wait to feed these kids? Now, today, I had them, and I'm also a caretaker of a disabled husband. We're both in our mid-seventies. This is not what we expected, but we're, we risen to the occasion. And I love all kids in this city. And I went to pay my taxes this morning. That's when I remember found out with time this was, how important this is. So I want my money's worth for every child in this city. And then remember that these kids benefit. And when you go to the library, which he went today, because it was hot and he had a book, there was hardly any kids in there, and that was between one and two. That's usually when they have the food there, they have the movies there, and they have programs set up. But where are the kids? Just want to remind you of that. And I want to give my profound thanks and heart to our state representative, Kathy Osten. She can use up any time I have left to finish what she has said. Thank you, everybody. That you can do it well.
Dominique Avil.
Hi, my name, hi, my name is Dominique Avilas, twenty fifth Street here in Norwich. I just want to say first off, I am a parent first. I'm always a parent first. I was an employee at Bishop Early Learning Center before it got shut down. My comment is mostly that it's a lot harder than I thought. So we had a meeting at the school, and we were told about this, and we had the discussion, but a lot of it was derailed with other comments, and I feel like you guys said a lot of things that did not match up with what we were told as employees. And I'm curious especially about the budget because of the fact that you guys said that you guys had a budget where you guys had to cut down the school, you guys couldn't do so many things because of whatever money you guys wouldn't be able to receive. I had asked this question that day, that I was curious on why there was pay raises, but yet the income itself did not go back into the school systems. Because I kept doing research, and other parents have talked to me, and we've been trying to figure this out, and we really want to know why is it that certain staff members can get pay raises and not the teachers, not the par educators that have worked so hard for so many years to help provide for these children? And I know you guys are going to probably even say that's just speculation again because of the newspapers, but it raises a lot of concerns for us as parents, because that's in public knowledge on what people get paid. And when year over year shows that you have a pay increase, as a parent, we're wondering, why is there a pay increase when we're at a budget cut? Why is it that money's not going to a staff member that needs to sit there and be able to cover different, you know, positions? We lost thirteen of us, for sure, that I personally know, because they closed down that year-round program and they took all the subs out of the school. So yes, I'm wondering why is the budget a certain way, but yet there's other money available to allocate to places that shouldn't really be going there when it should go back to our children? That's my comment.
Von Anoy.
All right, it's Rambo Night, two Newton Place. Thanks for having me here. I first of all want to talk about the budget. You guys came to the board, to the city council, with a six million dollar budget increase. How much of that was Chartwells involved? How much more would it have gone up if we had this negotiations prior to sending it to the city council? It was six point two million, I think, you guys originally asked for. Got it down to two million dollars. I questioned on certain things in the budget. Two years ago, our transportation cost was three hundred, was three point three nine million dollars. It went up to almost five hundred thousand the following year. Don't tell me that was privatization. Did we change carriers to send our kids to school? Did we all of a sudden get a big hit of five hundred thousand? It went from three point three million to, what was it, eight point three million in cost, the student cost? That's a big increase two years ago. And this year, it went up almost five hundred thousand. You took three hundred thousand off, so thank you for that. I'd like to know why that went up so much. What changed? It was after COVID. It went up, almost doubled. Okay? Fuel costs, last year you maintained five hundred and twenty-five thousand. This year you went up a hundred thousand. You dropped it only ten. So I don't know what we did differently last year than we're doing this year. The food service program, I don't even want to go down that road. That is really sad to have that happen to our children. And for you to sit there and say that the lady who is the director worked with you on this budget, that's like someone coming in and you interviewing your replacement. That's really what you did. You interviewed someone to take her down. And I don't believe that she helped you with that. So our kids are suffering in this school district because of it. Budget season starts early in the year. You guys could have had this program looked at before March. So timeline definitely is affected here. We shouldn't be talking about not having kids on the last year's school. Should have been done way before that, or give it another year and negotiate it. I would like to know what the budget was at six million dollars, and I'll look back at that and see. But if that Chartwells wasn't involved in that, what's the savings for Chartwells? Does anybody have any of that information? There is no information. You're telling us you're going to privatize to save money? Where's the savings? It's two, you just showed us the two million dollar savings for the Bishop program. Where's the Chartwell savings? Just go ahead and keep putting the money in the coffers, taking our taxpayers' money, and do nothing for our children. I'm, I can't believe it. I can't believe I'm sitting here, because I probably would not have stood here if it wasn't for what we've done. Six million dollars you asked for. What was that, six million dollars? Please tell me, somebody show me a budget. Because you only cut two million from it, according to your rates. So how much would the bitter Chartwells have added into that? Would it have been eight million? Was it ten million? That's all I'm going to say. So, again, the food service program, you just basically told everybody in this room that you were interviewing the replacement of the director. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Bustamante.
Hello, my name is Lynn Bustamante. I live at fifteen Hammond Avenue in Norwich. I was the manager at Stanton Elementary School, where I cried my last day when I had to leave because I'm going to miss every single one of the kids that I have seen go through kindergarten all the way up. But, that aside, I just wanted to let you know that the meeting that Mr. Sapinski says that we had with two managers, it was not an official meeting, it was a meeting that we asked him to be at with our union rep to ask for more money for the managers. Because we were doing the job of three people at some points during the school year because we were short-staffed. That meeting, it got around to the Chartwells thing. Well, it wasn't Chartwells at the time, but we asked why. He couldn't answer me. I've asked why before many times, and we still don't have an answer. We were self-funded. There was no money coming out of the budget. Why? Why would you do that? Our director made sure that everything was paid out of our budget. We never had to close the kitchen because we were short-staffed. We made sure it worked. We, and yes, there were two directors at that meeting, but it was not an official meeting. It was not about this being put out. We never heard about that until Erin finally pulled a meeting, a manager's meeting, and told us in April. And everybody was shocked. I spoke to this board in May after I had found out about it. And we also sent emails to every single board member. We sent in letters in May from people that had signed from our schools. Hundreds of letters, I might add. And now you're saying that you've never heard anything. I beg to differ, because we, I was one of the ones sending the letters. Me and a couple other managers, we took it upon ourselves to try and save our department because it was that important to us. I've lost sleep at night. I don't know what I'm supposed to do when September comes, because what if the Chartwells doesn't get approved? Who's going to feed our kids in September? They're going to come in expecting breakfast that first morning, and there's not going to be anybody there. How is that going to work? And how is that taking care of our kids? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Is there anybody else here for a public comment? Please come forward.
Hello. Deborah Johnson, forty-two Harborview Lane. I live here in Norwich, and I pay Norwich property taxes. And I'm also a social worker at Bishop Early Learning Center. And I was a social worker that was out for five months on administrative leave and cleared. I want to talk about the preschool, and I want to talk about the town that I live in, that I chose to live in. I'm from Minnesota originally. I chose this town because I I chose this town because of its diversity, because of its needs. And as a social worker, my role is to work with the most oppressed populations, whether it's gender, class, economic level. Whether it's, you know, your sexual identity. That's where I'm supposed to work. That's what I believe in. That is my code of ethics. That's why I'm in Norwich. The decision to close the preschool. If we know anything about educational research and what makes a difference, what is one of the most, largest predictors of success for children and adults? When you live in an environment with major disparities? This is in Fairfield County. I pay more property taxes than my friend does with a, almost a half a million dollar home in Waterford. Because I'm paying for the services that I believe in. So, what we just did, and I hope to God, I hope to God those numbers are just exactly where you said they're going to be. That's not what I understand. That's not what I heard. We're not getting all those preschool numbers. It's impossible with six classrooms right now that we're going to have the numbers that we had. It's impossible. And what we have decided by closing the preschool is we have decided not to invest in our students. We have decided to cripple an already oppressed community even more. We have decided to not give them a step up, but a step behind. You have made this decision. You have made this decision. And it will have an impact, but it's not the impact that we want. And the fact that there was no discussion before, my administrator didn't even know what was going to be on the chopping block. That is, there's something really wrong with that. So, when you go by a three or four-year-old, when you walk by him in the city, make sure you say hi and ask him, "Are you in preschool?" Because a good percentage are going to say no. There's no space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Mr. Ford, please.
Hi, my name is Sarah Zalinski, 205 Whitman Ave., Norwich. I'm coming at this from a parent, but also a community member and just really hearing from, you know, all of the concerns of all of these people. I, I agree with so much of it. We're having a national conversation about the need for universal pre-K. We had it. I chose to move here with my four young children because this was an opportunity. And like so many others have said, there are so many things about this community that brought us here. But it's not a secret that the reputation of Norwich Public Schools is rapidly declining. I'm a public school teacher as well and word on the street is wherever you go, don't go there. And it's, it's not funny. It's devastating. It's devastating because I've had four years of experience with kids in NPS. And every single one of their teachers and their paras has been outstanding, outstanding. But like we're hearing from the food service conversation and all, and the communication that the Bishop staff was given about this is not consistent. What the people are saying was the, the information given, and I know for sure the Bishop staff learned about this closure because a parent posted the letter that we got on June 14th on Facebook. And then they had a meeting where they were told what was going to happen. And it sounds like, you know, similar red flags with the food service conversation. But limiting pre-K cannot be the response to this budget deficit. It cannot. We're talking about the increasing special ed costs that will surely cause these to increase. If we do not continue to give kids the foundation and parents the opportunity to work and all of these things, that absolutely, that number is going to continue to rise. And we have families, as so many have said, that rely on these full-day options. They, they need this in order to keep their jobs. I've heard from lots of people that, that now we're not sure what they're going to do and one parent might have to make a decision to stay home. That is not good for the economics of our community. That is not good for the property values in our community. There are so, this is, this is impacting every single angle, not just the parents and the kids that, that will have limited options next year. This is so much more far-reaching. And when we think about the, the families that are still choosing to move to Norwich despite the high property taxes and all of this about the reputation of NPS, we, so many are choosing parochial schools and the integrated day charter schools. But not everybody has access to those. Not everybody has the privilege to know when those deadlines are, to have the money to pay tuition, nor should we. We, we do pay incredibly high taxes. The notion that we're having conversations about where we're going to send our children is outrageous. But the idea of closing this preschool i- is, is step one, it can't happen. We, we need to continue to have these, these options for families and not treat the staff from, from the teachers, the, everybody who nurtures, teaches, feeds, shows up on the frontlines every single day, we cannot treat them as just supposed to. Because what happens to teachers and negatively impacts teachers is absolutely going to have an unstabilizing effect on the kids. We can't do that to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kathleen Aybino. I live at 183 Whitman Ave., here in Norwich. Have lived here for 40-plus years. Actually, lived in Norwich even, you know, longer than I've been on Whitman Ave. But I was compelled, really, to come here and speak this evening because I am a long, longtime educator in the field of preschool. I spent 40-plus years as a social worker, as a school readiness coordinator, as a special education coordinator for preschool. All the comments that have been made are real. And I hope that you all are really listening because this is a really bad decision. What this is going to do for our children and our community is really just not acceptable. These decisions hit at the most vulnerable, as has been stated. It will impact everything down the road. And children deserve better than that. Three and four-year-olds need people to step up and speak for them. I haven't really slept well since I saw that this decision was made in this community. I have grandchildren. I would like better for them. My children had a wonderful, wonderful experience in Norwich Public Schools. I, I can't see that for my grandchildren and I need to speak for them. But I also speak for all the others, not just my grandchildren. This is a really bad decision. And as a school readiness community, we should know better. We should have a school readiness council who was aware of this prior to this decision being made. There should have been the State Department involved with this decision. There should have been a lot of coordination so that this decision could have been avoided. And I don't like hearing things like, "Well, the state, we have money for you, but now we no longer have space for you." I, I could not fathom that that was the response once the state became aware of this and the state says, "What can we do? How can we help?" Well, the building's closed, it's being used for something else. We just have to do better than that. That's it. We just, this is my community. I expect better. And I, and I hope that's the direction we're all going to be going in for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes?
Good evening, Chillicothe Street, 82 Lower Hill Ave. So, I'm not going to repeat a lot of what you already heard. I'll hit on the two points of the early education, the preschool. I will say, many of us, you're talking over 20 years, have been fighting for the state to fully fund full-day, full-day, full-year preschool slots. We have advocated, we've gone to heart for it, we've worked here at the local level. So, yes, this was a shock to read that you're reversing what many of us have been fighting over. With the summer meals, the, really, the question that I have is that I don't understand how you have dictated sites based on the number of stu-, the number of youth who are attending a program, when my understanding of the summer meals program is you're supposed to provide meal at sites to kids who are hungry, 18 and under, or under the age of 18. That it doesn't matter whether NFA has 100 kids going to a program, 500 kids going to a summer program. If a child shows up, they're hungry, they're supposed to get fed, whether they're in NFA's program or not. Those are questions I have. But I'm going to step out and ask the bold question of each and every one of you here on the Board of Education. Are you willing to reverse the decision that you made? Are you willing to say, "We will have the space here in the city of Norwich to put all of the preschool slots back where they were"? Right? And are you willing to address the school cafeteria staff, summer school program, summer meal program? I appreciate the state stepping in. There are requirements, but, requirements for nutritional programs. But regardless of whether the contract gets modified, gets null, whatever, are you willing to, to reverse your decision? That's the real question I have. And what does it take from you to understand that, to me, that's the right thing to do? Thank you.
You.
Is there anybody else wish a comment? A public comment? Come forward, please. Anybody here for public comment?
He's behind the camera.
Sorry.
Good evening. Pete Nice from 36 Laurel Heights Road. I'm speaking to you tonight, not as a mayor, but as the co-chairman of the School Readiness Council, which oversees the grant that we receive annually. Our superintendent and I co-signed that application. It's about $2.3 million. My knowledge of the program, and I, I need to bring this up based on comments I heard in your own dialogue back and forth, moving to a majority of half-day slots will never be approved. That's not the intent of the program. It's school day, school year, or a full-day, full-year, 10 or six hours. If you're counting on it being allowed and permitted, I'm warning you right now. And it's not my warning, I just know the program is run. We previously operated under exemption, I think, two years ago, and that was over facilities, availability and things of that nature. The tenants of the program are to serve the families, the kids. Halftime doesn't do that. So, and I know there's, I hear there's a meeting again tomorrow. I was on the calls, the Zoom meetings with the commissioners that our Senator Ray's, I'm not going to bring up what she said because she covered it greatly. There's a lot more work to be done in order to maintain this program. What I will tell you is if we lose those daycare slots, they're not coming back. They will be gone forever. That's the risk. You asked about risk tonight. The biggest risk on preschool is losing those slots. Because once the other towns assume them, we've lost them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else here for a public comment? Anyone else here for public comment? Anyone else here for public comment? Public comment's closed. Next item, action item. We're going to require a motion from the floor. Possible action item regarding 23, 24 school budget as presented tonight by our business administrator. Motion from the floor, please.
Aaron Daniels, so moved.
Need a second?
Tanya, I'll second. Motion.
Discussion?
Just a couple. I'm sure our city council, which is the exact same thing, that when they had to make these decisions, that this passion was in the city council chambers. Because the numbers that we asked for maintained all these different things. Those who have been here a while know that saying no is not the right answer. Because that takes you down another very unpleasant path that in the end, doesn't change anything. Budget is the budget. My other comment is, we did have other suggestions on what to do. And these same people, many of them were here then. Remember when we didn't have sports? Remember when we didn't have music? Remember when our class sizes were touching on 30 or over 30? Those were our other choices. So, we're going to lose them in the beginning and we're going to lose them at, it's always going to be our fault.
I'm sorry.
You had a Heather moment. Give me a second.
But all we can do is play from the sheet of music we've been given.
And not given a very good one.
And that's just, that's just it. It is what it is. And this was the one thing, you're right, the other things aren't mandated either. But again, we know the power of those things that I talked about. The power of, of sports, the power of having your, of those different extracurricular activities. And again, many of the people who spoke here tonight, or at least a few of the people who spoke here tonight, spoke then, when we cut those. So, think about that as we go. You talk about, you talk about, you talk about when people leave things. People leave the role of education. Because there's a good answer. But we're, but you know what my job is? Is to keep speaking up and saying, "I really do believe this is what the people want." Regardless of what you're hearing, the people want us to, to keep as many programs as possible. But at some point, we got to make a hard decision. And that's just the way it is. And I cry with you, but it's, it's just where we are.
I just want to know why we weren't in contact with the state more, trying to make sure that this did not get eliminated.
Because that's, that was not, as, as long as I, and I'm here to help you. I'm here to help. This is not the first time that Norwich Board of Education has had to make a tough decision. We had to make cuts last year.
No, I know.
And hold on, so, so what I'm saying is, that means that those words, though beautiful, are eight months late. Because nobody told, we've always felt it's been on our backs. We've had to, we have to do it. We've had to, we have to do it. That is, that is why. We didn't know. We didn't know that they would come to our rescue until today.
Yeah, but maybe had we talked to them before, when we first found out that we were having an.
But it's been, like I say, this is not, they could have come, you know, hey, Al, next time something like this comes up, because she's right, I do know who she is. She got, they could have come and say, hey, Al, y'all, y'all did some tough stuff this year. Next time something like that comes up, give me a call. Now, again, now the state is blaming them. But that's all right, because I'm gonna fight the fight. I still believe that somehow we're going, but for today, I don't think we have a choice.
Unfortunately, budget process is convoluted in law. We didn't get an answer from the city council as to how much money we were gonna get until June ten. Our next meeting was June twelfth.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
It was one day. It was one day.
One day. Well, that's right, because there was the holiday in there. So we had twenty-four hours to come up with this. We didn't have months to plan this. Superintendent and Bob had gotten together, and they came up with a list of options in case we didn't get our allocation. You know, worst-case scenario, if we got five hundred thousand more, or or close to what we needed. You know, if we got close to what we needed, possibly we could have cut some smaller programs. The um this was uh out of the options that were presented to us. This was the only option that would give us a budget. I mean, we essentially operated without a budget because you can't, a budget means balance. Income versus expenses. So until the expenses meet the income, or the income meets the expenses, you don't have a budget. You can't say, oh, I'm gonna go out and sell hockey sticks at a dollar apiece. It cost me a dollar ten to manufacture, but I'm gonna sell them for a dollar. You can't use the the rationale that I lose money on every sale, but I'm gonna make it up in volume. That doesn't work. You can't go in, you have to have an idea that you're gonna have a balance. And we didn't know what our final figure was. Because the city council, I mean, we're one department in the city council. They had tough choices to make also. They delayed their meetings on the the final meetings until the the very last, waiting for the uh the the state legislature to conclude their deliberations and to determine exactly how much money was gonna flow into their into their coffers and what the city of Norwich could afford to give us. And unfortunately, the amount they came up with was short of what we determined that we needed. So luckily, out of the options that we were given, this option seemed to be the most, the one that would give us the biggest bang, but gi- give us a balanced budget. It was a very hard decision. I have twenty-two years of formal education. I am a strong supporter of early childhood education. Everything I've read said, the earlier you can get kids into a classroom or or teach them something, read to them in the womb. I mean, that's what you should be doing. From that point on, that child needs to be educated. And it breaks my heart that we had to do this. But the other choices were hard also, but they were not gonna give us to the final number. And luckily, with Bob's figuring, this will get us to the final number. It'll get us over the, our budgetary shortfall. As people know, last year, things went up. We were dealing with nine to eleven percent inflation figures at some point during the year. Luckily, it's come down somewhat, but still prices have gone up. We had major hits in special education, more special education needs than we had last the year previously. That affected our budget. I mean, our budget this year is what, two point three, two point seven in the whole? And we're we're gonna have to hit our contingency fund to cover the shortfalls for this year. The year that ended July first, the final figures won't come in until probably August, but we're gonna have to tap that money. So we operated in a deficit last year. Well, we didn't, we we had a balanced budget, but we had unexpected expenses. Hopefully, we do not have unexpected dis- expenses this year. If we had bad snowstorms, so if we had three or four bad snowstorms, there goes our budget.
Yeah, see, that's what really scares me.
That that scares me too. Or if we have ten more high-needs children that move into Norwich and need special services, need to be bused somewhere. We have to provide for them. That would blow our budget also.
I think what they really, I think what's hard for the public to see and understand is us making cuts also with the same, at the same time. I mean, they seem to be incredibly upset about uh raises for administration and stuff like that. When teachers are getting one and a half percent and administrators are getting eleven percent, and we earn a negative budget and we're cutting preschool.
No, they're they're not.
Okay, well, that's according to like the papers that I've been reading in the newspaper.
No, 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 I I'm the chairman of negotiations committee.
Okay, I'm just going by what I'm reading.
No, 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 mo- mostly everybody, we had to give larger than, teachers actually got a larger increase than in years past in order to be competitive. I mean, we were being.
I know that that's what we were saying in evaluations for the superintendents.
We we were being, we were being coached left and right. All right, go ahead.
I guess my my thing is, I don't, it's not about my personal opinion or anything like that. It's just something that I hear in the comments. They're upset, they think that we're giving the administrators all these raises, and then we're cutting the preschool program. So it makes us kinda look like jerks. So we need to clear that up to the public, to make, to help them understand, in my opinion. Because obviously, we're not on the same page. There's a lot of information, different information going out, misinformation, I'm getting it from both sides. I just want the truth, and I wanna make sure that we know that we are not paying our, giving our administrators these huge raises and all this extra stuff in their evaluations, also while cutting the preschool or how we're talking about not having music or sports. Like, to me, that's a red flag, another red flag, and it concerns me.
Yeah. While the the teachers and administrators, those those contracts had to be settled in the fall. So thi- this was long before the budget process even began in December.
Okay.
So those contracts were 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 tied. We also had huge increases in tuition expenses. So, you know, tuition went up, transportation went up, utilities went up. And I mean, everybody just look at their own household budget, the cost of electricity, cost to heat your buildings, all went up. So we are not immune from cost increases. And we have to cover those within our budget. Unfortunately, this was the best of the worst choices. You know, we had horrible choices to make, and we couldn't do two things at once, two programs at once, to cut simultaneously physi- physically, and it would not be possible. So this was the only, basically, the only, we discussed this at last meeting. This was basically the only option we had.
Right, no, and I understand that. I just wanted help to help the public understand the facts. Where can they find that information? Where, you know what I mean? Like, if if they're, I don't want everyone spreading information saying it's eleven percent raise for the administrators. If that's not what it is, I want, I want to be able to be transparent and make sure the public knows where they can find this correct information, the facts. Okay, but not everybody is, you know. Half the time, half the parents, we don't, as a parent, young children living right now, it's incredibly hard to get five minutes to look on uh Nor- on the website, find out when the meetings are, find out this. Hey, if you're working nine to five and meetings start at five thirty, what do I do? Feed my kids dinner or go to the meeting? I mean, it it's hard for everyone, and we need to realize that it's hard for us to sit up here and make these decisions. It's hard for them to deal with our decisions, but we need to listen more. We need to hear them more, because I've been sitting up here for a year and a half on the board, and I really feel the exact same way I did as a parent. I don't, I mean, I feel heard now because I have a spot where I can speak, but I don't, I still don't feel that the parents are being heard. I don't feel like the staff is being heard, and it breaks my heart. So I wanna make sure that we can open these lines of communication and do better to make sure that everyone is informed with the correct information and the facts ahead of time, so we know what's going on. Because I'm sorry, sometimes we get the pub, I mean, the agenda posted, what, twenty-four hours before? And there's like twenty-five things I've gotta read? I'm a mom of five, and I work. So I mean, I'm sitting here, like, half the time I'm driving in, trying to read. You know what I mean, to to catch up, it's a lot. No, I have it, I, I have my son that reads to me. That's why my eight-year-old is one of the smartest people in the world, because he's constantly just reading stuff to me. But I just, I really feel, the reason I ran was because I didn't feel the communication was good. We all know that. I'm still saying the same thing, I still feel like we can do better as a team. And when I first came here, I was scared to work with everybody because I felt like it wasn't gonna be, you know, it was gonna be like a Republican Democrat crap. I don't see that, I don't see us as R and Ds. I see us as a good people, and I wanna know that we are all doing our very best to make sure that we get the public the answers they need, we get the answers we need, so we can make the best decisions moving forward.
I just wanna say one thing, parents have to remember is that they're accountable. You have a child, you have to stay informed. We're, we don't, nobody gets newspapers anymore, which I understand totally, because I can't understand paying what two dollars is is in for weekly edition now. But you gotta assert yourselves, I'm sorry, this is the way it is. You have to assert yourselves, you have to reach out to us, reach out to the principal, your student's school. You know, we uh we have these meetings monthly, I know they're hard to get to, but there's, you also have to be accountable yourselves to your children. So um on that aspect about staying informed, that's what I'm referring to. But um.
But I know that I had the hardest time trying to get informed, which led me, which led me to.
Reach out to his board members. Everybody has a cell phone, go to our page, the numbers are there to email us or to call us. Don't hesitate.
I mean, this, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
You're done, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, as far as the budget documents, both the city budget and the board of ed budget are posted on websites, and they are freely available. You're not gonna get an answer in five minutes looking at our budget. I mean, I I'm a fairly educated person, and it took me over a year to get my head wrapped around the Norwich school budget. I mean, it's a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty million dollar budget with, you know, many working parts.
Yeah, I know, that I don't understand all of it, I'm, I can barely.
Nine different unions plus non-sout, you know, non-union people working for us. So there, i- it's incredibly complicated. There's a public budget, which comes from, is funded from the city, and there are private, you know, federal state grants, which come in and fund a lot of our programs also. So it's, there are many, many working parts, and they have to mesh together, and timelines are very different as to when the money comes into us.
No, and I understand that, I'm just saying that there is some, I feel like all we have to do is, we need to do better about communication. Because as a parent, I still don't feel informed.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, that's just my, that's my personal opinion, that's why I'm sitting here right now. This is never where I thought I would be. You know, and I mean, never, ever did I think I was gonna be on any kind of committee of anything. I'm a waitress, I like to hang out and have a good time. This is complicated stuff, but I'm, I love my kids, and I love the kids of Norwich, and I wanna make sure that we do better, and I wanna make sure that I'm learning as much as I possibly can to do what's best for this whole district.
Okay, I I've taken up too much time, so anyone else?
Anybody else have any comments about the budget?
Greg, say something. There there's, there's a few things kinda going on right now. There is a discussion happening about civic engagement and also our responsibilities to communicate to the public, and both of those things are true and important. We all need to do better. We need to do better, making sure that we're transparent, the public knows what's going on. And we need all of you, like, you're here tonight, to be here, to be reading, to be involved, to tell people to be involved, to, we need civic engagement with everything that we're doing. Many things can be prevented when we have that. It it wasn't a hard decision, unfortunately, at the last meeting. It was an easy decision, it was the only decision we really had. It was the only decision that would get us there. It was an awful decision, it hurt, I didn't sleep then, I'm not gonna sleep tonight, it's terrible. I I don't, I, I'm sitting here going, what are our options? You know, what's gonna happen to our certified staff, our non-certified staff, our kids, our future, the special education costs? There, this is bad.
It's very bad.
It's just terrible. Um, but you know, as was mentioned, this was, these were the options that were put in front of us, and they were all awful. And I, I don't know, when you talk about the budget, I've looked through the budget. I've tried to analyze, tried to understand it, like, what else could we do?
But it's, to me, it's, it's so confusing.
We're wrapped.
Can I ju- just piggyback on that? People have to be, still be mindful that we just came out of a pandemic. And a lot of the programs that we didn't want to cut, or our our behavior technicians, all that, that have added a lot to our budget. We have had to increase our mental health supports tremendously. And a lot of, and the sports and the music and the art, they're what get some of the kids here. You know, otherwise, they wouldn't even come to school. So we we, there's so many things that we have to take into consideration. And um I just wanna say that because um we are still suffering from the ill effects of the pandemic. Our kids, it's not good. So we could, we weren't gonna cut, you know, our mental health services, which is a a chunk of our budget. And as I said, it would have taken, like, we would have had to take a little from this part, a little from that part, a little from that, two million dollars. So hopefully, we will get some help from the state, and we'll be able to somehow, you know, change things, but.
The word commitment has been thrown around this uh discussion multiple times, now invited by us here at the table, but by the people coming up to our uh desk and giving their comments in a public comment. The commitment that the Board of Education has to the taxpayers is to present a fiscally responsible budget to operate for an entire school year, which we did. The city council, I'm sorry, let's go back to the city manager, who. I'm sorry, let's go back to the City Manager who came out with his budget and put a two-point-five percent increase for the budget of our schools. That's not fiscally responsible. But, that's the figure we had to go by, even through the ad hoc committees that we had in which we had City officials, Board of Ed, and Cabinet. And we cut, we looked for more cuts, and we got it down to a reasonable, a reasonable, uh, number. And it wasn't good enough. And I know although that the Council, on the, on the night of the twelfth, um, there was a, 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 and many, it, it came up, a resolution came up by, uh, Alderman Nash that, uh, put another five-hundred thousand dollars into our budget. Which was greatly appreciated and as much, it was much needed, but wasn't gonna cover. It wasn't too many years ago that this Board of Education, uh, which I was a member of, Mr. Daniels was a member of, um, we started off the school year with an, uh, with an unbalanced budget. And we continued and continued and continued to try to get more money cut from the budget. But in the long run, what happened was we had to come to the city with our hat in hand and ask for additional cost savings, additional money for our, our budget. We don't wanna do that. That's, it's embarrassing to us and it certainly should be embarrassing to the City Councils. But, it hasn't made. Last year, they asked for us to make sure that our budget was self-sufficient to the point where there's gonna be a zero mill rate increase. And we did. And when we, we went, we went a step further and found another one-point-some-odd million dollars. But it was a risky budget, it's like this budget right here is a risky budget. And you can't operate like that, you, it's too much of a risk. And what is the risk? Every single child that goes to our schools. That's the risk. We don't, we don't have the answers, we know we don't have the answers. The decision to close Bishop School was the best available option to us at this time. It's not well-received and I understand. We all understand. But there is no other option. Now, we heard from Senator Austin, uh, to, tonight, that gives us a glimmer of hope and it's hope it, it does come to fruition. But we're not here to be, we're not here to be, uh, anything but anything but a, a, a set of people of nine individuals to give you the best and financially reasonable budget that we can work with and continue to do our, 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 our work. Anything else?
Oh, you can go.
Thank you, Carly. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to all the people of Norwich to come out today to our Board of Education to speak your minds to all of us. And of course, as a proponent to have community engagement, you know, I wish we could see this room packed with people whenever we have our main meetings like this, even special meetings like this. That way, because the information that we, the Board of Education receive, you know, we receive from, uh, the Cabinet, we receive, you know, from our conversation and our research, but of course, we also receive information from the public as well. And it's very important that, you know, we, we see something like this going forward. And I know time is tough for a lot of parents, um, and, you know, people who work, you know, more than one job to come to a meeting like this, but this is something that we as a board love to see, um, going. Now, as many of the board members mentioned here is that this budget, this budget, uh, cycle is not very good, it's distasteful. Tough decisions have to be made. The more fiber in all of us is not good, right? Because as one speaker mentioned, and I marked down in my notes, is we are here to look out for the interest of our students, of our children, they are the future generation of Norwich. Education in general is the linchpin of economic development, so when we provide high-quality education for all of our students, more young families will come to our city and our city will prosper. And we can live up to what Norwich is, the Rose City, and roses, they bloom. And I know the Board of Education, we're not very political, right? Just because we have Republicans and Democrats who sit up here, we all speak in one voice and that's for the students, right, to provide them a great education for them, right? When I was on the board, there was not a lot of politics at all, right? That is kept outside of the Board of Education. But one thing I want to remind all the residents in Norwich is that local elections are important. State, federal elections are important too, but local election is very important, it's impactful, as we all experienced here tonight. You can communicate with all the board members here, you can communicate with the City Mayor and the City Council about the budget and your concerns. And, yeah, you know, truthfully, elect, local elections have consequences and, um, you know, we, we experienced that. So now we're in this tough predicament with this budget. And as the, uh, Board, um, the Board Chair mentioned, we try to fight for this during the ad hoc committee, which is comprised, as the Chair mentioned, uh, City Council, uh, members, the board members, and the Cabinet. You know, we spoke deeply about the school budget and how we can be able to be fiscally responsible and support our students as well. Well, with all of that conversation and after the election that we, uh, had, you know, we are in this, uh, moment now. And it's just not, it's not a great feeling and, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough decision and as Board Member, uh, L. Daniels mentioned, you know, if the Board decides, speaking hypothetically, to say no to this budget and we go down a different path, that's not gonna be good for the city of Norwich either, because now we're gonna create a, a firestorm, right? And unfortunately, this is the budget that we received from the Council and we are mandated to fill that budget that is set up by the current Council. And we have to find the answer to make sure we fill up this gap. Well, Member Mark Kulos mentioned, if we go the other way, you know, and we, you know, say, you know, no to this budget, you know, we're also not thinking about the future, what happened if we received ten special ed students coming to the Sea of Norwich? You know, we're gonna be prepared for the future as well, you know? So, uh, that's the comment I, I have and it's gonna be a, a tough decision.
Carly?
Yeah, um, you know, at our last meeting, we, like, uh, Vice Chair Kulos noted, we had one day to make a decision and we were presented with some options, we were presented with three different options. And it was not really options at that time because we had a two-point-two million-dollar gap that we had to fill, it wasn't option one, two, or three. Uh, it was all of the above and I always hate quizzes where I have to select all of the above, uh, but that's the decision that we had to make and even then, we couldn't, we didn't have enough information to, provided the directive to the sprinter and to communicate the choices that we had, the options that we had at that meeting. And we specifically scheduled today's meeting in order to have this conversation that we are having because even then, the impact it was gonna have on our staff, the impact it was gonna have, um, the school readiness grant was unclear to us. And as of tonight, I'm still unclear as to the impact that the school readiness grant will have because that meeting will be happening tomorrow. So I know that there are other community partners who may be impacted by the choices that we made and it was, it, it, it's a very difficult choice. And I've heard a lot of comments tonight and I appreciate everyone who showed up, huh, who shared their, um, their thoughts. Um, but I did not hear, is anyone providing any solutions aside from Senator Austin tonight in terms of what we can do? And I think I've heard that, you know, we all need to be engaged in this process. So as we're struggling, right, conver- conversation around the budget has been happening for months now, we've been meeting with the ad hoc committee with, with members of both the City Council and, and the Board of Ed. Everyone knows what difficulties we've been facing and the challenges that we would have with the cutback we, we've been given. But at this point, nobody spoke out, nobody provided any additional solutions to what we could do. And I do appreciate feedback, I do, but I also need support from all of you in terms of like how to operate forward. Tonight, the three options that, the decision that we made is the options that we have, it's the best that we could do and it is, it is a hard thing and as Greg said, I went home that night feeling terrible. And I think somebody noted, nobody wants to be on the board and even I had that, I'm like, I don't wanna be in that space because those decisions, it's not what I came here to do. So, I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Carly. Is there anything else?
One more thing, it's, it's more of a question, it's, I'm throwing things around, trying to anticipate instead of just constantly playing catch-up, um, I, I wanna know from the administration and others is how if we do find a way to get some money and to get all of our students, how will we get all of those students into the space that we're creating? I, I don't have a good understanding of how this might work. Um, so if we do get funding to increase and to have some full day and we only have six classrooms, is that gonna work? Like.
So now you, so now we wanna answer to something that we only heard an hour ago.
Yeah.
You wanna.
We were last meeting and that's where we are again, if we make another hasty decision that, say, okay, we're gonna do this and then we can't back out of it, we're stuck in the same awful spot again, like, now we have the ability to put kids in the place, we have no place to put them, so we, we can't do that.
So. So we don't have a lot of space in the school department, that's clear, we have absolutely no space at Stanton. We have ESL teachers who are working out of the library, there is no library at Stanton, a traditional library, we're doing our best that they can. We have no extra space at Uncas, we have no extra space at Aquanix. The other schools, their cup does not runneth over with space. Other programs will have to make room in order to make space until we have new buildings that are on the horizon and for everybody's edification, we are, we are trying very hard to maintain enough spaces for the future of, of a potential of, uh, universal preschool. That will be very hard to, to sell to the overall community, I'm sure. Um, we, uh, in working with the commissioners and, and the senators and representatives who were so good to, to come out, we identified that if there were three more classroom spaces identified, that, and this is like, communicated to me just this afternoon, that, and, and we, we are giving, um, in the morning, the cost breakdown of what would be needed to the Commissioner of Early Childhood to see if, I, I, I think Senator Austin said it very well, if there was funding that was already allocated to us could come to us in a different way or in a different time period. And we, um, I have reached out to principals, um, to identify which space, I don't feel comfortable saying which space out loud tonight because they haven't gotten back to me today to say, yes, it will fit in my school, I can make it work. We are, we are confident that we could accommodate three more classrooms in one of the schools. Ideally, it would be a school that is not already Vets Mahan or Huntington so that kids could go to their neighborhood school, families could stay together, parents could be a part of the parent organization from preschool, uh, going forward and the ride times on the buses would be shorter for our littlest learners. And so at this point, it looks as if three full-day, uh, program slots is what we need, some more support from the state for.
If we were to get more, enough funding, though, why wouldn't we reopen Bishop, though?
That's. They wouldn't fit in Bishop, there's Bishop, Bishop's classrooms are smaller than standard size and so the amount of students that can fit in a preschool program at Bishop vary by room, so if Jenna, who's here, could have her, like, wand, she could say, this particular room could fit sixteen students, this particular room could fit twenty students, there is only one handicap accessible, uh, classroom at Bishop. And they've done a wonderful, wonderful job with what they have. A piece of what Bob spoke to you of in the cost savings that was explained to you and you voted on, you knew that if you collapsed and took offline two buildings and you gave them back to the city, those savings would help us meet that two-point-two. So if you, if you put, if, if you, you, it, it doesn't work if you don't take something offline forever because it would be a Band-Aid, it wouldn't even be a Band-Aid that was two-point-two million. So one of the options that was before you was close an elementary school, that was going to get you less money. Because if you closed an elementary school, the, the amount of students and staff that had to be reorganized.
Right.
Um, they're all awful options, that was.
Yeah, we don't even have to discuss that, we already know.
And then I'm also thinking about Mayor Neistrom's warning where, what is the loss of our grant money? Is that gonna wipe out our savings and then put us in the same spot and then we just screwed up and got nothing for it?
So what we've been working on with Commissioner By is a way where our school readiness money would not be jeopardized and we would, of course, I don't know if the mayor, I kinda lost sight of him, I'm sure he would be our advocate into that end, I have no doubt that if, if presented with those full-day slots, if that's a possibility, that the school readiness council would support. I have no guarantee, it would be my hope and my, my, having been a part of their, um, their deliberations in the past, they're a very thoughtful, loving group who loves early childhood programs.
And I think the audience needs to know too that, um, with the new schools, it's gonna be, you know, it's a long process, but we're hoping to have pre-Ks, you know, every school, which would be the perfect solution as long as the funding is there and we can get what we need to make that happen. And then the kids will be right in, you know, their school where they'll stay, you know, right through, um, to, uh, fifth grade and then go on to the middle.
Anything else?
I just have a quick question, in terms of the list of positions that, um, will be either reallocated or will no longer, um, I mean, so I think there was one clarification that we received from, from comments in terms of like, some of these, uh, positions are being moved in other places, I just wanna get some clarity in terms of like, I'm seeing the cost saving, but if those positions are still intact, how?
So if you, if you start one through eight, the early learning facilitators that Bob mentioned before, they are without work. There are other jobs that are available to them, but they wouldn't be these jobs. And so there are, th- th- they would, they've been instructed, um, to contact human resources if they are interested in, in some of our vacancies. Of the nurse position, um, a. Of the nurse position, um, a nurse position was cut. Um, it was, uh, a vacant position or a position that, um, was, was not, um, someone was transferred into it. Uh, same with the other, uh, the administrative assistants. There were retirements this year, um, there were, um, budget cuts to the administrative assistant, um, uh, union. And the two administrative assistants, one transferred to Global, the other to Veteran School. Um, the custodian will fill a vacancy. The paraprofessionals will fill vacancies. So we stopped hiring.
Okay.
And we, um, we, we hired in areas that, you know, if there's a m- middle school math teacher and no one is in this group is certified to be middle school math. The certified special education teachers, uh, participated with human resources in a mini job assignment where the most senior of the preschool teachers was, was given the option of which school did they want to go to. That, that occurred before the end of the school year because by contract, um, through the teachers' union, they need to ensure that they have, and rightfully so, their assignment letter.
And the paraprofessionals?
Paraprofessionals will be reassigned, potent, they, they have a ten month work here, except those that are working for the extended school year program. And so they were given, um, letters of assurance of employment for the fall because we know we already have vacancies in paraprofessional from either retirements or resignations or both. So they just won't be filled by person from the outside. Our current staff would be reassigned and given options based upon their seniority.
Anything else? Mr. Paulson, are you the, uh, the new ju- junior member? Do you have any comments you want to say?
There's not a lot to say, however, um, considering the, um, what you were given, I probably would have voted the same way. That's all I can say. You all did, I can tell you all did a very fantastic job and you all worked hard and I've seen many, many, um, as a long time North resident, I've seen budgets and some have not, um, it's been, I think that was the right decision to keep music, keep, um, sports and keep art. It's, uh, I think very important, so. And I've been around when they did shut down, I think it was, uh, oh, Meadville and, and Buckingham and that created a huge stir. And also when they did a lot of re-figure the busing. These are tough decisions.
All right. Any other, uh, comments? Anyone a, uh, call or please for a vote?
Yeah, what's the actual vote, though? We just have a possible motion. There isn't actually a.
No, I have, I, we've got a motion.
Yeah, but.
Motion is possible motion regarding the budget, so I don't know what the actual.
Everything we just talked about didn't happen.
Al, Al, I guess the best way to put it is it, it so like, do we need another, do we need another motion? It's a motion to accept the revised, um, twenty-three, twenty-four budget as present, presented tonight by. So you want to, you want me to, that, a good enough statement? Do we want another second to make? No.
I think illegal, yeah.
I think legal, you should.
Go ahead, say it.
Kevin can second it again.
Somebody should make a motion.
Kevin Settani, I'll second that.
Same person, second again.
I'll second that revised motion or that motion.
Okay, Carleen Charles?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Erin Daniels?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
James Paulson?
Yes.
Kevin Settani?
Yes.
Mark Lulu's?
Yes.
Chairman Alden?
Yes.
My motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, we got a motion still out there.
What?
The initial motion he made.
Yeah, but they just revised it.
It was just a revise. No.
I think it was the same the first time. It's basically what you said the first time.
And he was just restating the motion.
I think he was just restating it. I don't think it was a new motion.
I think we're good.
Okay.
It wasn't a, the, the addendum to the motion, it was just a restatement.
Uh, motion to enter executive session.
Okay, pursuant to Connecticut general statutes one dash two hundred, members of the Board of Education move to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's performance and evaluation. Dr. Christian E. Stringfellow and Amber Rittigliano may be asked to participate for some or all of the executive session of the Board of Education.
Second that motion.
The motion on the floor to enter an executive session, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing not. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes? Unanimous.
We are in executive session at eight thirty-three P M.
My goodness. The work you've had to do. Trying to just keep up with it.
Unusually busy in here in the summer. Morning training.
You can sit in the front row, Sheila. We don't mind. All right.
Adults are just like kids.
All right, we are now out of executive session and back into the hearing. Is there a motion from the floor?
I will make a motion to move that the board authorized Vice Chair Mark Kulis to engage on behalf of the Board of Climate and Culture Consultant for the school district and to consult the board as may be necessary for that purpose.
I'll second. Under discussion, I know I just wanted to see, anybody have your discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I believe the term was a board attorney.
Boards, you're right. It's boards counsel.
Counselor.
Okay.
Thank you all. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous nine to zero. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Aaron Dagan, so move.
Mark Kulis, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed?